It's pretty expensive hatch out there.
Doesn't have the green, it shouldn't be, doesn't have any green on it. That's where. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, short haircut.
There you go.
Say thirty, we'll call a meeting order with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. But we do have a quorum, but Kurt Cupka had contacted me earlier, he's absent, he's trying to outrun some storms and so he will be excused for today's meeting. We do have a quorum here. First item that we need to take care of is to approve the agenda.
So moved.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. He doesn't have his wingman to do it.
I've been there.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ooh, motion carries. Next, on the agenda, we can have our public comments, we'll open it up for anybody from the public that wishes to speak. On any item on or not on the agenda, we will entertain those at this time. I have you on as an agenda item, so. Good, Gary.
I have a question, how did our pipeline bill turn out, is it still sitting on your desk?
I have. Yeah, I haven't seen it signed yet. I think that, oh, how long they have, thirty days or something?
Sure. And then anything more before Ben leaves this morning about sixty-three, forty-three maybe being done in the same year instead of taking out the farm grant about two years in a row? Anything new on that, Ben?
Do you know all that?
So, so that was the setup, so who was the brainiac to set that up for that to close up two years in a row? I'm sure it wasn't you, because you're new.
Well, it's only going to be closed for her.
Two falls.
Two falls, I mean, that's only the pond out from just the last stretch. At sixty-three, I'm, I'm not sure what the traffic control, what the state's finding. I know from what I've heard, I believe that it's going to be asphalt, so it's not going to be usually when it's asphalt, they don't hard close, so they'll, they'll still be able to get through.
Next year?
Yeah.
In the next six?
Yes, correct, so usually, I mean, with asphalt, you know, they put it to one lane and turn on the other side, walk in their pain. I, I can't speak for what they're, they're planning to do, but that's what I assume they're doing.
Is it possible, do you know, do you know why they're replacing that bridge on E four three deposit?
Uh, it turns any reason worth replacing it is that the load rating that it has on it right now. It's, it's load rated, so right now, uh, a legal truck is, you, you know, you see the different signs, you see the
Yeah, sure, we let us, yeah.
Yeah, so a legal truck is twenty-eight, forty, forty, and that's, that's starting to dip down under that and we'll want to, you know, place it with a structure that's a colberg, and so then it's going to last a whole lot longer and it's going to be better head shop wise, so that's trying to do.
Then is the Ridge Road Bridge also going to be closing up there pretty soon, going to the west?
Uh, it's not even, they don't even have a contractor for it yet.
I thought that whole thing could be bonded, okay. Thank you, Ben.
Anybody else from the public wish to speak? If that will close public comments. Next item is to approve the regular minutes from five twenty-five.
Make that motion.
I'll second it, guys, been moving and segmenting to approve the minutes from five twelve twenty-five. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ooh, motion carries. Approve the minutes from five thirteen twenty-five, special minutes.
So moved.
It's been moved.
I'll second.
It's there.
Just barely.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ooh, motion carry. Discussion and possible action on economic development funding, Catherine is here.
And, yes, good morning.
Good morning.
So, board meeting, what, week and a half ago with you guys at, at my office with my commission? We, we put together a new alternative budget, but from what I'm hearing with conversations, like Mark was able to reach out to my executive team member Brian, so well, maybe we need to keep discussing this further. I guess I'm, I'm just here for some input and guys know, like, I got debris in my right eye over the weekend, so if it looks like I'm giving you weird side eye or something, I can't, I, yeah, I can't see very good out of my right eye this morning.
The wind was bad, wasn't it?
Uh, it was terrible, I ended up with a lot of debris, I think I'm going to have to go get it cleaned out again today, so. So, yeah, I can sort of see you over there, David.
Just practice it.
Always. It's terrible, I have a one-eyed dog, so my husband's been teasing me for like forty-eight hours that now he has two one-eyed nails in the house. Yeah. So, so maybe some more board meetings with you guys where you can start to get a better handle on, you know, projects I'm working on. Some, you know, there's a lot of discussion about grants, I think we need to talk about what kind of projects county has coming up. If there's some way, you know, it's not something we've ever done in the past, but is it a component that we could add to the table right now? To help get the county back even kiltered and find, find a way to maybe fund a few projects and let us be a piece of that that we've never been before? I mean, I guess I'm just here for your thoughts this morning, where do you want me to keep heading, you guys?
I have any specific thoughts, I do, I, I know we have to do something to make our county more profitable. And finding, you know, finding those areas are, I think is a big chore.
I think the longer you guys get a chance to work with us, the more you're going to see how many things we touch, how much value there is to all the things we touch. But maybe we need to do a little better job quantifying those results. I tend to just move on rather than take time, I'm not honestly very, I did not know that since January, but I'm really not fond of accolades. I like working quietly behind the scenes, making my communities look good. And so I think the more we get to know each other and what you see in our organization, I think we're going to get. But if you guys have some ideas of things you need me to be working on that would specifically help the county, then, then please, you know, communicate that. Do you want another budget from me, where are we landing, you guys?
I'd, uh, did you guys get the new budget?
I think it's in here.
We turned back the administrative time, I was worried about some relocation changes, I've had a couple of cities offer me space since then. So I've tried to spend the end of last week tracking down, you know, where could I work from throughout the county? I don't think that that's a problem at all, I have space in virtually every community.
But I think my conversation with Brian was pretty productive. Couple of things I shared with him, just our concerns, our budget, that's why we wanted to cut the, you know, cut it or try to repackage it. And it didn't seem like things were moving in that way when we showed up to your, your meeting. I think your commission was set to dissolve the organization. And so that was a shock to us because that wasn't communicated back, I think that there was some communication problems, maybe from both sides. We would take ownership of some of that. Some of our concerns now that the budget has already been certified and those kinds of things, we might have to do a budget amendment to continue on. When I looked at the new budget, I think one, we just wanted some different, you know, different approach, I guess, to economic development. And not such a large expenditure, so we don't know what that looks like, we would rather have an organization that looks more at public-private partnerships rather than us being the lead in doing all of the funding and all of the projects. That's the feedback that I'm also getting from some of the business community that we need to morph into that, and if we can start morphing into that and get some concessions on your guys' side as to what that's going to look like moving forward, there are a few things. One was that the part-time office staff that would have been there for twenty hours a week. That's moving forward, that's something that we would have to grow back into, I think, that just through attrition, that, that position's already been kind of not filled again and, and so it would be, that would save us thirty thousand dollars off the top, plus any FICA diapers. Our side of the taxes and that kind of stuff, out of that job, the twenty-five hundred that was in there for the office relocation could be pulled out, then our insurance, I don't know why we're charging you so much for health insurance, but we need to get that more in line with what everybody else is.
It's a massive hit to my budget every year, I mean, it's just a massive hit to my budget every year. Answer to that, economic development and, and so our, what we need to mean, and so they're considered an outside organization, not county organization. And so they have historically paid more to be on our insurance plan, that is how it's been set up, that's why we're system.
Right, the nine-one-one board is a twenty-eighty organization, the E nine-one-one board is a, is a twenty-eighty organization. We go down the list, and so everybody should be paying the same amount. Whatever we're charging you right at this point, we need to fix that and get it back in line with all the other twenty-eighty agreements, I don't know.
That, that much less money I have to raise.
That's between five and ten thousand more dollars out of the budget they should present.
Huge hit for two of us, it was over half our operating budget if we have like its. Yeah, so that would be great if we can bring that back down, that's very helpful.
So just between those that I've just, you know, skimming, found about fifty thousand dollars worth of cuts?
Well, and we were already up to about sixty-four thousand in that, that, that pass you've got right there. I mean, that, we brought it way down over the sky, I think I brought it down sixty-four thousand, so if we just go ahead and completely cut any type of part-time person to help me and what goes with all of that, that, that's, and with savings on my insurance side of the piece, that, that gives you another, that's another ten thousand that cuts right there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if, if we can, if we can't find a way forward with hundred, ten thousand dollars in cuts, then we're definitely not talking enough. I'm worried without part-time help, but we'll make it work.
Are we, are we still looking at Chamber of Commerce stepping up a little bit to help?
If, if we move, if we move forward with this funding, I think that that's kind of one of the caveats, we would really like to see this still go to a public-private. We would rather have voting members or at least advisory members on your board, that, that, ones that are bringing commerce in. Right now, the way it's set up, it's cities and county officials, not necessarily the people that are bringing business into the county right now. Not necessarily people who know how to operate a business in this economy, in this area, geographic location, there are people that are doing it out there that know how to do it. We want, want them to be at least contributors to our decisions. You get people from city councils, and we had a really honest discussion, you know, like, who wants to do economic development? The last person to raise their hand has to do, you know, in, in some of the cities, that's what.
And that is, I took over six years ago, I, that's something I've really worked to change. Because so often the city council sat there and they, the last city council person to raise their hand got stuck with me. And I started going to cities and saying, hey, we have Sarah Gingrich from Dyzer. She is an amazing board member, she calls me all the time, even if she misses the meeting, she follows up. And she runs business in Dyzer, she is, I wish I had more.
Yeah, and we need more of that, like, because I did the same, I, I researched the counties around us, and what are they doing? And Powashie County has a POW one-eighty, P O W one-eighty, out of a few research, but I would like you and, you and, and I would be okay with too, but let's talk to them because they have, like, Minats is the chair and they have Brownells is on the board, and if we could get more of these businesses that already know how to bring businesses here, I think that would be cool, and they only have one person, they pay like seventy-two thousand is what the county pays, no insurance because they do one fundraiser a year, they bring in all this money, it pays for the one person and the insurance, and then they just work together. So even though you don't have this part-time person, you're leveraging these other business owners that want to, you know, have time, it's not just, you know, your cities and counties that are busy doing a thousand other things too, so.
Where are we landing on the grant subject? Because that got brought up a lot too, like, give me some feedback on that as well.
Yeah.
On writing grants?
Writing grants, but, but I wasn't sure that after our last conversation with my board, whether or not you were looking for economic development or a grant writer. So just give me a little more feedback on that, what you're looking for, what you're hoping for.
I guess I was just a little confused on that, I thought that was the biggest part of economic development, doing that.
We want all the above, but if you can have other people to help, or it's not just you, like, you're good at it, if you're good at it, you know, finding grants, writing grants, helping the county, like, more conversation, I mean, that's huge, right? If we're putting in a huge amount, then if you can help us save money, it offsets it, right? Yeah, I feel like we gotta, I, I definitely want economic development, we all want that, you know, we need to keep it, just how is it going to be structured? Can we get this twenty-eighty structured differently, or do we need to start over and create, you know, or does someone already have something? I'm up for whatever's going to work best, you know, but we got to get there.
But my commission needs to get in two weeks, and you guys will all get the invitation, so let's just keep that communication going. The, the office is where we host all the meetings for now, and then let anyone jump in on Zoom if they, if they want.
Are, are you opposed to writing grants?
No, honestly, I mean, I think, I think I'm flexible, I, this job is pretty different every day of the week for six years now. So, and there have been a few grants that have had to hit my desk, it's like Debbie Durner shows up from DuPont and gives us a hundred thousand dollar emergency grant. Then that means that paperwork clearly sits on my desk, there's no one in the community chasing that money but me. But I'll, like, the Hometown Action Team here in Tama Toledo, like, they just announced they got the Guernsey money. The day before they went to Guernsey, they called me on my cell and said, okay, here's what we're going to say, here's our approach. And then I help them kind of tweak things so that they clearly put the message out that the people that are giving the grant money, I kind of know what the motive is, what their goal is, and so I, I poach everyone on grants all the time. I try not to let them hit my desk too often, because grant writing is consuming, it's all consuming. And I think we're not leaving any money on the table out there, but I, I think I have always measured that a little bit because I do call on businesses and industries all week long, there's so much to this job, it's, it's honestly been nev- never the same day twice, ever.
So, so I'm clear, and so the public's clear, we're talking about keeping economic development if we can. Talking about, and for the whole year, not just ending, as commission was looking, ending now versus working through December and then the cutback. And then when it comes to grant writing, I understand that there's sometimes you need to do that. I like the idea that you're talking about, or you mentor somebody else, if the ci- if it's going to impact a city, I'd really like to see the city, whoever's in that city, do the grant writing with your mentoring, so we have a whole bunch of grant writers fully capable throughout the county, because we're all getting older and at some point in time, you know, we're going to have to do a different job or whatever. But still, I, I think it's incumbent upon everybody who's in a role of leadership that you mentor somebody below you for your replacement. I don't care what business it is, but that's, that's what I'm looking at. So, I, I like what I'm hearing, I like the fact that we're looking at cuts, at making smarter and more decisions where we work together. I, I think that's a good, it's a good start, because I don't think we can work as well together as we ought to. My goal is to make our county better. Yep, but I think that the grant writing kind of was brought up by others, and so we just thought that you wrote grants to, to begin with.
I talk about grants all the time, so I guess that, I mean, it's a natural assumption.
If you were a grant writer for twenty-one years, you're a very good one, and that's where some major money can be secured for us. And if it's the position that we're in right now, we, we just want that to be, I think, pretty heavily weighted option for us, particularly on any county type of projects.
Make us a little concerned about all the grant writing discussion, the last couple of meetings with you guys was, I was worried there was an expectation that you guys thought it was landing all this money for different things, when I'm really the conduit on the outside helping funnel someone to where the money is and making sure that the community gets the money. Now, some communities are better at it than others, like Jill just walked in from Tama, formidable grant writer. I can't, exactly, I can't always say that in every community, some people are very, very nervous about writing grants. Honestly, you just fill in the blank, if you don't know the answer, you go back and discuss it till you have the answer. So it's, it's not anything that people in communities can't learn to do. Lots of our communities go to that community foundation grant writing class every year they put on, it's a great local class on how to write grants. It's easy to write them, it's much harder to find them.
Think as we move, can iron some of that out, I think, to David's point in his email, he's talking about quantifiable result. Like, how, how do we have assurance that what you're doing is making an economic impact on Tama County? There's no metrics, I understand, I've been, I'm, I'm the private and public side of it. On the private side, if I work and I'm evaluated, I have to score myself and my supervisor scores myself, and then there's some metric as to whether I'm bringing income in or, you know, and based on that, I get either a bonus or I get to retain my job, or maybe I'm let go if I'm not affecting them. How do we measure that for you? Because we just know, we don't know any, we're new, obviously, and, and how do we make those assurances with this type of investment in economic development?
When you guys took over, we, we gave you guys that worksheet for the last six years, it was eleven pages long. So maybe that needs to be just a spreadsheet with a number, like, because that is eleven pages in six years of, if you look at some of those lines, it says two hundred thousand dollar grant, it says two hundred and ninety thousand dollar investment in a building. There are numbers all throughout that eleven pages. There's a lot of numbers, I mean, one point five million at the juvenile home.
Yep.
Every time I turn around, good things are happening in this county and money's flowing in, and I know our organization and I am a big part of that.
How do you communicate that to somebody who doesn't know what you're talking about?
Well, and I guess, I mean, that's an eleven-page worksheet, you guys.
I know, but from, from, from that time until.
It's a book practically, about five years of activities.
From the time that we're funding until next year this time, how do we justify or how do we know what's going to happen then?
I think if you're looking for a crystal ball in economic development, then we're all in trouble. Because we don't know what's going to happen, you've got to have someone readily available, that when the call comes in and says, hey, I've decided I'm pulling my business, I'm going to here, you've got someone on board that has a relationship with the local business community already to say, wait a minute, what do we need to get you to stay? I mean, if every day is different, and we have businesses in this county that have thought about pulling out, they've changed their minds. We have so much development on Main Street and Trail right now, we have five new businesses in Dyzer that have new windows and doors. The juvenile home has a twenty-five million dollar investment. There are so many good things happening, you guys, and we're stronger because we have us in place. I, I worry what our main streets would look like after five years of lack of investment, of no one actually out there hustling and encouraging business owners. There's so much to this job that you just don't see. It's relationships, it's encouraging, I mean, I, I say all the time, it's not my favorite title, but I am this county's cheerleader. I am out there every day telling businesses, thank you, you can do it, organizations, go for it, I know this project seems overwhelming, but look at the Hometown Action Team, they're up to a hundred and forty-seven thousand. So we make a difference, you guys, I know we make a difference. So if we need to quantify it better, we will, but honestly, that, that worksheet that we gave you, that is a massive amount of energy and effort in five and a half years.
But here's the thing, we're looking at moving forward, and I'm the one that asked about the qualification or so. And, and I personally, in my personal life, it's a pain, but we've got to be able to look at where we're going and be able to, you know, we're born, put it on paper and, you know, hey, this is what we're trying to get, and if there's any impediments that we can get in, in, you know, get them out of the way, we want to be able to do that. But, yeah, Jill does a very good job, I sit in the meetings and listen, they, they're bringing in all kinds of money. We need about fifty-three thousand more to get the six hundred thousand that's sitting out there at region six.
Yep, we're, we're very, very, very close.
Yeah, so, I mean, and region six has an impact too on what we do, so.
Honestly, they're our grant writing center, I mean, I look to them, region six writes so many grants for our county, it's unreal.
But, but, but I want, I just want it out in front of us, so we can say, okay, we're paying this kind of money for the service that you're providing, and here's the impact it has on the community, and here, here are dollar figures, just so that we can, we can sit and say, we made a great investment. Maybe, maybe down the road we need to do too, I don't know, I, I, but until we have that kind of information, it's hard to make a decision based on, I mean, that, that eleven pages I've talked about several times, it's very good, that's in the past. And so from the qualification part too is, how many of those are still in place? And, and, and what is it bringing to our community? Because that, that's part of what we do, that we've got a foundation, build on that foundation. Because that that's part of what we do to be, we've got a foundation, build on that foundation, keep building, and we need more businesses here.
So like a one-year outlook, pretty much, like what, you know, we've seen the past, what does it look like for your, what do you have in the next year? If you could put a spreadsheet together, what the what the project is, the city, the timeline, dollar value. That way we know. I mean, yeah, it's always good to look at any any job you want to know. I know things come up and it can change, I get that, but.
And that would be pretty similar to my monthly reports with my commission. Here's what's gotten done, here's what's still in the pipeline. And that's what my report looks like every single month to my commission.
Yeah, I think it'd be good if we all could get that, just so we know what's going on, or we have more regular communications, you know, whether it's. Monthly, you come in for meetings or something, or we go to your meetings, but, you know, trying to figure out what's the right way that we can understand what's going on.
We just need to get that information out to the public. Because we we need the buy-in of the public. I mean, you kind of like been an unsung hero to some degree. And and that doesn't work well when you start going out and asking for support. Because, well, who's that Catherine lady? You know, uh, I mean, we know who you are. But what does the rest of the county think? And now, I mean, if you if they don't know you're out there fighting for them.
I think they know I'm out there fighting for them.
I do know, so like I'm the board.
I mean, I I I talk at Vladris Commercial Club, I talk at Dyser's annual DDC meeting, and eighty people are there. I. I mean, honestly, Kirk, do you think Catherine is not known out there? I mean, do people not know when I walk into a community that I'm there to help?
You're not. Jill, was you what?
Everyone has my cell phone in this county, everyone.
I I just I just would like to say it's harder to quantify what she does. Because she's she is the cheerleader. She, if there's grants out there, she's in my office. Let's go, let's get on this, because this is where we're going. And and then I throw back there and say, hey, I found this grant. Wouldn't that be good for um Chelsea, Elrond, Miami, I found this. That's the balance we need between our cities, our county, and her. She is the one that directs us. And then we have a relationship back and forth that I can direct these to her, and she goes to other small towns and helps them find these directions too.
What are, what was the leader or what was Tama going to do with, was dissolved? With the economic development money?
I don't know. We're we're very upset that it's going to be difficult. I think that we would probably reach out to Catherine and hire her DM if we could. But let's see what we can do. But like you said, I know you're funding side two and our funding side two.
Yeah. So uh, it's told that they that Tama was going to hire a grant writer to use some of those funds for writing grants. And so uh, that's kind of where the investigation, you shake your head, no, but that's what I was told.
That that has not been brought for my council.
Council member that told me this.
It hasn't been brought. I've had the vote of the whole council do that.
Sure.
And I haven't showed up my resume. I told my commission, I you will get my full focus. If everything goes off the rails and this doesn't pan out. I will fight till the end. I like an egg for DMC County. So we'll figure it out, or we won't.
Due to some of the talking points, Brian and I met for almost two hours last week and try to hammer some of this out. And want to make sure you had a little bit of a heads up. Another thing, um, I think that, uh, and this isn't a big deal, I don't think. One of the things that we had discussed and and I said, well, the twenty eighty specifically prohibits any of the boards of supervisors from being the chair of your commission. You report to your commission, uh, and we have one representative on there and we fund eighty some percent of your budget. And so communicating with your commission isn't necessarily, we don't want all of the power. We don't, we're not trying to take over the board, Brian said. We thought you guys were just trying to get, you know, buy the votes and just. Uh, terminate everything that way. We don't, we want to see economic development. Um, and maybe that's where the disconnect is on the communication, because you report to your commission. That's not necessarily what, that's why we don't know what's going on. I would have never signed it, ever. Uh, so it has to be, I think it has to be revamped to at least allow us to have some uh it uh some input so we can come back and communicate to the full. So moving forward, that's what we would be looking at, a couple of changes in in the twenty eighty to make it a public-private partnership. Um, got some of the funding that uh that was obvious that I've already talked about. Um, be more open to writing grants moving forward, having better communication with our. And it's a tough process. We understand that. But we we definitely want to have something. Yeah.
Like at a certain point, I gotta know where to land. Okay, I'll get that back to my commission. Thank you for your time.
Are you are you good with um? Are you, do you have any kind of a read from the commission as to whether, I mean, I give Brian's input, but what's your?
I don't know, because like we 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 got asked to do the new budget that we spent last Thursday or Wednesday, whenever that was. And now we, I mean, we're turning around again, so I I honestly, like I I've said before, I'm Switzerland, I don't vote, my commissioners vote. So I'll I'll schedule, we have another meeting scheduled on the twenty seventh. So we'll get that agenda to you guys on the day where they land with you.
Yep. Or did one of the things like, we need something, are you right?
Oh, honestly, I think it's the chair if I prove there's nothing to do for this job. I I like my job, that was gonna hell of great. But I am definitely done with the list. I mean, this has been six months of not knowing where I land. So we we've got to shake this out of the wash.
I mean, I'm buying it. Is that meeting on the twenty seventh at six o'clock?
Six o'clock, yes.
Are you able to call in David or?
I will probably.
It's probably too late up there. Wonder. Can that date be flexible? I think those three are not available that evening.
Okay, let me get to my commission, because usually it works, it would be good. Works Tuesday, but.
Yeah, if they're able to flex that way, you know.
Let's see if we can and not delay for something else.
Yep. We want to get it done too, I mean, it's critical for everybody to figure out what to do.
That's great.
Yep.
We'll we'll. Okay, thanks. I'll get you the new date then. I'll let you guys weigh in on the new possibility.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you for what you do. I know it's a it's a hard spot to be in, and we were hoping to go quicker too, but it was quiet from the commission for like two months, and then we showed up, but it's. Does always, so I think, like you said, we all are all we need to get together, what you're saying too, and we. We need all coming together, so let's try to find a date that works for Mark and I, just reach out to us and.
That'll work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer.
I want to move, Darcy, are you okay moving up?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm I want to move, Darcy, um, she's with Prairie Ridge, I always want to say Sutusi, because you were there for so long.
Hey, um, my name is Darcy May Carter, and I am the clinical director for Prairie Ridge, which um formerly was Sutusi. Um, Sutusi been in the community um for over four years, and in October, we merged with Prairie Ridge. Out of Basin City, which um was actually a very positive move um for us. And um expanded us, we've always been four counties, now we have thirteen. Um, so here in Tama County, we do have an office. Um, it's on. Four one with Palm Street, it's one of Marty's friends is playing. And right now, we're here, I have a clinician here one day a week, um, providing co-occurring services. Um, what um Prairie Ridge does, we are a certified um clinical behavior. Um, agency, um, we are, we are CARF certified, we're licensed by the state of Iowa. Um, so we have a lot of um oversight, and we provide a variety of services. We provide outpatient mental health services. Um, we, here in Tama County, we provide co-occurring services, that would be for individuals who have substance abuse and mental health disorders. Um, we do substance use treatment, we do gambling treatment. We do prevention, we have prevention staff that are in our schools in all of our counties, but. I'm back from county, here in Tama County and all of our schools. Um, we have a medication provider, psychiatric ARMP, so if people need medications, we can provide medication. Um, we will soon, after the first of the year, we will have an ACT team. And what an ACT team does is is kind of like a crisis team. So we will have that in place and working with um Iowa Ball and Rats. But as part of being a CCBHC, we have to have an ACT team here locally. Um, we have access to um our folks up north, Basin City is our main office. So um right now, in in this area, we have um eight clinicians. Um, one, um, who is a, well, actually, two of us are like the mental health professionals myself, and then I have another one, another clinician. So we provide strictly the mental health piece, but all of my other clinicians are trained to provide co-occurring services. And they do that. So right now, our office is open in Tama one day a week, um, and that's just flexible, that's just because that's where our caseload is. Um, it ebb and flows, as our caseload, um, it's higher, then my clinician comes down more often. Um, we also provide services in the jail. Um, we've had a little difficulty getting into the Tama County jail. Um, but we provide, we're in Marshall County one day a week, and we do telehealth in Powashake and Harden County. So I know we've had a few cases of Tama County jail, but um certainly we are available to provide telehealth services to inmates. And or if they had a huge flex and they needed someone um face to face, we can certainly work something out with that as well too. Any questions do you guys have?
Um. Could you elaborate a little bit on uh, so it's it's uh mental health awareness, but and so. The uh, the spectrum of services and then kind of like when Sutusi had joined with Prairie Ridge and now with the new behavioral health districts going from regionalization. Um, we are now incorporated in the same district, behavioral health district. And so how that synergy needs to happen between Tama County and and Marshalltown.
Absolutely, absolutely. So yeah, that has changed a lot, but um what I will tell you is that um. Sutusi, um, being able to um merge with Prairie Ridge is a very positive thing. With a lot of the changes that are happening at the state level, small agencies, who are very soluble agency financially, but small agencies are getting, they are not going to fit anymore. It's gonna be really, really hard. So for us, that was a huge benefit. We have partnered with Prairie Ridge, um, I've been with the agency around my twenty first year. So um we have partnered with them my whole time that I've been with this agency, and doing a lot of different things. And we always joked that, you know, we should just be one agency. Well, the timing was right. And so um in terms of funding and the services that we can bring to Tama County as well as Marshall, Pardon, and Powashake. Um, it it really increases our ability to do that. Um, you know, we, um, just for an example, um, the Marshall County School District reached out this year and said. You know, we are short on mental health clinicians at our school. Can you do anything? And we put together a telehealth team, and now we have about ten schools that we are working with, providing telehealth services. So um, mental health, substance abuse, and med management, um, providing that. And also to the next phase that is going into businesses. To be able to say, you know, hey, you know, we can provide mental health services to your employees, and they don't even have to leave. If you can provide us a telehealth room, then, you know, that helps you because it helps with um your employees being off the line for however many hours. Or being out of their office. So, you know, we are very, very creative and innovative to look at how our counties need our help.
Yeah. How many employees did Sutusi have compared to going to?
So we tip with us, um, they inherited twenty employees. And now we are an agency that has, I think we have a hundred thirty five employees now.
Yeah, there, it's kind of puts things into perspective. There's a lot of resources there.
A lot of resources.
Across the continuum of the spectrum.
They'll have residential, so um for um FUD and co-occurring services, um, we have residential and that um is located in Mason City.
The adult.
We have adult, men and women.
Men and women, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Um. So this might be a surprise to a lot of people, but um Center Associates, last week, we had found out, uh, actually, Michelle had uh reached out to me after one of our meetings and said. Um, she had uh, somebody had stopped in and said that uh maybe Center Associates was closing. And uh in Tama County, and this is after we just did a resolution a couple of weeks ago where we said, one in about twenty six hundred residents. Have a um, oh, excuse me, we have a um ratio of uh therapists to uh population, one to twenty six hundred and some change. And uh the three therapists that were at Center Associates. Um, are no longer going to be available, you know, according to the report. And so there was some confusion. We thought maybe it was a different establishment. They had also associates in the name and come back to. Uh, I confirmed with their director, their executive director, Paul Daniel, that they would be closing. And they cited a plethora of reasons why. And uh, I had some negotiations and some of those talks are still ongoing to at least leave one therapist here. Because it's, if it, uh, when I reached out to you, there were. Um, there was a lot of willingness to come and provide those services if there's going to be a vacuum. And so kind of to try to alleviate some of the anxiety. However, people who struggle with mental health don't do well with flipping from one provider to another. You have to build that relationship, you got to build that rapport. And that's going to be gone unless, because the biggest barrier to treatment is transportation. A lot of people who struggle with mental health don't have good transportation and to just say, well, it's only another twenty five minutes and they're and and you're there. We want to provide those services in our community, and so we want to have at least some kind of a cohesion between you and and uh Center Associates. Those providers are committed to being here if they can find the space, some of them. Um, there's one that comes from um here, it has been here for like thirty two years. And uh is seeing people mostly from the eastern side of our, or yeah, eastern side of our border. And uh so anyway, uh, she would still be available. Hopefully, we're still in the details, but wherever we would be. Uh, we we want to work with you uh to bring more more services. And we talked about more services and more that are available. Predict uh ACT team is wonderful. Um, we talked about Together We Can, that's up here, support groups.
Yep, they're great, the ladies are great.
Do a lot of educational classes and groups. They're out of Marshalltown and they're uh willing to come here. Uh, one day a week and offering, and then uh they've graciously offered their building. Uh, uh, very.
Yeah, um, that is not a problem right now. Like I said, we only have a therapist down there one day a week. Um, that doesn't mean you have to stay one day a week. As need arises, we certainly can provide. Um, some that condition down, but we would have space, so we're more than happy to share that space. Um, we do a lot in Marshalltown with Together We Can, so they're great partners.
Yep, one one of the things that Darcy had brought up uh is, well, if we need more peop-, you know, more uh clinicians to be there, and we only have one office, like physical office right now. Well, we're getting friends with Mari Hardin, we'll just talk to him, and he can give us more offices, we'll, you know, get a different building or whatever it takes. We want to be a partner in that, in my opinion, if I would open it up to the rest of the board.
Yeah.
Um, we need the services, we need to bolster, uh, particularly, we are already resource poor, and now we're loo- losing our primary provider. And uh I know it's tough to recruit people, but uh in telehealth services have to be more available, but we need them here. We need them in Tama County.
Yeah, I agree, yeah. And I do have, I have, um, we're recruiting right now. I mean, I'm hoping that with graduations, maybe we can recruit. Unfortunately, um, young people, they want to go to bigger cities and bigger places, so that is a challenge that we often have. Um, as part of our strategic plan for Prairie Ridge, we are making out ways that we can bring therapists to our communities. Um, because most of our thirteen communities, other than Marshall and Sarathordo, or Mason City, that are very small communities. And transportation is an issue, and um but people need help regardless.
Yep, absolutely.
So we um, we are always, we do a lot of brainstorming in our management meetings, of how do we meet the needs of people that we serve.
Yep.
So that is our goal. So um your feedback, um, Mark and I talked in the phone, your feedback, you are hearing things in the community. If there are things that Prairie Ridge can talk with, um, please let us know. Um, like I said, right now, I'm working on recruiting, I'd really like to have, um, I'd really like to hire a form mental health therapist. So that I can spread my part, but um, you know, we're willing to do what we need to do to accommodate. so that I can spread my cart, but, you know, we're willing to do what we need to do to accommodate.
Yeah, I, I heard last week, the day before they were closing, that they were closing. And that's kind of surprising. The person that I know that has been using their services was surprised because they found out that the day before. There was nobody to go be there.
Not good for individuals versus like having my own health.
No. Appreciate it. We're identifying right now some key members to get together. I don't know what we're going to call it, but Tama County Mental Health Coalition, something like that. We appreciate that, your partnership and your willingness to step into the gap here.
Absolutely. I took your cards. Let me just give you those cards. I apologize, I meant to bring brochures, but Mark, I can send those down to you. Just that kind of gives an overview of all of our services. But I, I manage the, I'm the clinical director, but I also manage our force south, which includes Tama.
Very good.
Be your country person. I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to come and share about Prairie Ridge. And I look forward to working with you guys. I think that would be a great partnership.
Yeah. Thank you for your willingness to come and share with us a little bit and kind of raise some more awareness. And we've got another miss that we need to clean up, so.
Let us know how we can do this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day.
You too.
All right, now we'll go to Ben.
Morning.
Morning. So we've been taking care of dust controls, lighting and rocking. And neutering the central oil to start it down. Be done. In front of Texas, the next one this Thursday. And then ninety to ninety-five percent plate. Some of the guys today taking care of the best, so. And maybe if it rains a lot, people won't even, people won't even need dust.
Wishful thinking.
We've been retrieving shoulders on our all roads except E thirty-seven. That's the one that we share with Ben. We had a type of one here, we're spraying shoulders that have been retrieved, so have not sprayed, so that wouldn't make that sense. So, and then, really the weather depending here, but we're hoping to get the cap replaced on the three hundred and forty street bridge down by Irving this week. And then we have tanker cars that are in on G. We're just meaning to give the dirtwork, put some work out and kind of clean those up when we'll be done with that. We did a quick pre-grade just east of the bridge on one hundred eighty street on Liquid Row, where Liquid Row is at. Be kind of doing the rest of that. I have another timeframe, but right now, we just did a quick hit, got that east of the bridge done. And then K Avenue north of the shop, the two hundred second, that mile there. Pretty wide in the, got the, just a lot of burns that we need to bring in and kind of shake up the road. So we'll be doing that. Both are depending this week.
You know, if you have?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, I, that's all I have for him.
Thank you, Ben. I've gotten a lot of concerns in the last week, and he's been responding right away and getting out there and taking care of it, so I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Did you ever hear back from the quarry or?
So, oh, yeah, I did hear back from them. So I guess I looked into it a little bit more in the sense of that we had done a resolution, I think, March of last year regarding since the, just north of that two hundred ninety, two hundred nine? North of two hundred ninety, they're going to put a, gosh, Amish, we're going to put in a school there. And so we had done a resolution to change the, the speed limit in there. We've done it just a mile west of C. So we have one, that went into our database, and we have one speed limit sign that's coming in from kind of that, there's a curve there. But we don't have one when they start coming west, when they head out of the quarry. So that's probably going to talk with our same guy and kind of put one out there right when they turn. So we can let them know that kind of in that stretch, we don't have for the whole distance. So I guess that's, I kind of talked with him and said, hey, but you have a really big project with, you know, you need to have them go to the south, the highway thirty. This, that's, that's where the split dust control with, with Wendell and quarry to, so that's kind of route we would want them to take, obviously. Our drivers sometimes have their own ideas. I mean, and it's, it's quicker and, but at the same time, it's also a really windy road, so it's.
Yeah, I had a call from our state representative, Dean Fisher, and he had said that there's, he's getting reports, and he lives over there. Tons of eighteen wheeler traffic going, instead of going back up, back down south from the road that we do dust control on. I'm there, going north and heading west out of the quarry, and it's a very tight, narrow, winding road. One of the residents there reported being run off the road. And so we don't want anybody unsafe. There's a, a stream of traffic there instead of eighteen wheelers. And it's just not safe. Lowering the speed though would be one thing. Can we restrict truck traffic through there? It's really not safe for the residents. Yeah, I mean, I understand that's more inconvenient for them to go around. However, on our watch, at least on mine, I don't want to have anything really bad happen when that inconvenience is going to cause safety problems for our residents. It's not really big enough for there to be a bunch of eighteen wheelers going through there with other traffic.
Look into, I know people have in the park over there. So I guess that, that thing I haven't done before, so I'd have to kind of look into what need to be done. If that's kind of the route we want, want to take.
It's very dusty. I know just our road where it hasn't had dust control. The wood that we pay for dust control for them to go out, they should use that. I don't know how to make that happen, but if we can make that happen, please do. Other questions?
Real quick, do we know what that project is that, that's causing them to go?
Or they, yeah, when I talked to him on Friday, he didn't, he was unaware that we had, they had a lot of traffic coming out, so. I know, I think they manage a bunch of different sites open.
True, okay. Okay, I was thinking more of the way they might be about to go. Yeah, we could do that. Sorry, David. Oh, it was not his.
The mic did not fall. I was pointing. Just a nation.
Uh-oh.
There you go. Uh-oh.
But it's close. Thanks, Ben. Oregon reassignment of tax certificate seventeen zero two two five two AM, Bill Davis.
So Mike is here to correct Mike?
Yeah.
Be like, like this.
Yes, I, it's my dad. I don't have nothing to do with this, but if you have any questions, I guess I can answer them.
Is this the dad that's in the paper every week, Mike?
Yeah.
What's the request?
So it looks like there's ten thousand eight ninety-five in taxes, miscellaneous expenses, all that good stuff. The actual taxes are two thousand one fifty-seven. No. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. And he wants to even two percent of that, every one thousand seven dollars and fifty cents.
Okay.
And he's already gone to the city of Spadeos since there are special assessments, and you receive the letter saying the bail to cover those.
Okay, and where's the property?
Is it just right over there, Mike?
Yeah, because we own, right across the street here and stuff. And, well, it's the place with the big ass sign that says Davis. And so this is the property right behind us, let's go, so.
Okay.
Is it the lot or with the big ass sign that says Davis, it's the one right behind that, so. Yeah.
Is there anything on it? Is there any?
Nope. I mean, there used to be a house there back when I was young, but
It's been taken down.
Fell down and I think there's still like a basement that kind of like just got sucked up by the, I don't know, honestly. Again, this isn't, there, I think my sister may throw in a few dollars to it, but I ain't doing nothing.
Well, you said ask you the question.
They just knew I was going to be here.
Those were the easy questions. I had hard ones.
So the question I would ask is, there's a ten thousand, almost eleven thousand dollar unpaid, this is unpaid taxes.
Between taxes and applying fees, interest, that's what makes up that ten thousand and a special of that.
So by doing this, then Mike's dad's going to start paying taxes.
All right.
And
and possibly this is going to couple of bucks.
Yeah. I have no problem with this.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we reassigned the tax certificate number seventeen dash zero two two five to William Bill Davis. That's not my best friend, but that's a century that you have here.
I'll second it.
Yeah, it's been moved and seconded in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Drop down to discussion of possible action on moratorium on community solar resolution five dash nineteen dash twenty twenty-five A. I was just making sure you're with us?
Yep, I am.
Okay. I'm going to read the moratorium. Whereas community solar is several solar energy systems whose primary purpose is to harvest energy by transforming solar energy into another form of energy. Or transferring heat from a collector to another medium using mechanical, electrical, or chemical means. And whereas the Tama County Board of Supervisors have been made aware during the zoning commission meetings this year about community solar and the lack of an ordinance for community solar in Tama County zoning ordinance number VI point one, published July seventh, nineteen ninety-eight. And whereas concerns have been raised by the public regarding Tama County's level of preparedness when it comes to development of community solar within the county, there currently isn't an ordinance to regulate the setback distances, finances in place for decommissioning, permitting process, the agricultural impact any future community solar projects would have on the county's agricultural resources, including whether such impact would run counter to Tama County's comprehensive, comprehensive land use plan adopted by the Tama County Board of Supervisors on May fifth, twenty twenty-five, whereas the county has an interest in protecting the county's infrastructure, natural resources, and property rights through adequate setback provisions. And whereas the Tama County Board of Supervisors wishes to enact a moratorium effectively, effective immediately upon passage on the development and construction of community solar and the application for permits relating to such development and construction of community solar for an indefinite amount of time to allow Tama County to review and update the language as necessary in the Tama County zoning ordinance and to incorporate the information and concern that have arisen through the public meetings helped by the zoning commission relating to such matters now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Tama County, Iowa, that a moratorium on the development and construction of community solar and the application for permits relating to such development and construction of community solar effective immediately upon passage is approved indefinitely. So this was brought to my attention earlier on in the legislative session. The legislature was looking at regulating community solar, and I didn't even have any idea what community solar was before this, and so I asked Dean Fisher to watch it. They didn't regulate it at all at the state level. I talked to Dean last Friday. He said that you need to do something, put something in place for community solar. It appears that there's a lot of problems with this project. Particularly that the state legislature couldn't get it through on their watch. We need protections locally. And they may regulate it at the state level at some point. But at this time, we're now working on our own solar for large projects and then wind for large projects. And we're going to do another, we're going to ask the zoning board to do another ordinance that includes whatever the concept of community solar is. Right now, it's not regulated by the state. It's not really regulated by anybody. So we need to have some regulation there. It's Dean's opinion, and I tend to lean on him for a lot of this kind of stuff. From the state. Anybody got any questions or?
No.
I don't know.
Motion or whatever we need to do to discuss it.
I, I have a big motion that we approve this, but I also pass a discussion later.
Okay, been moved?
I'll second it.
Second.
So not only do we have to worry about the community solar, in talking with, I was talking with Dean, a member from Ted, that's the solar people. They, they mentioned that natural gas sources for generating power. And I said, what about nuclear? And he said, well, that we haven't thought about that yet. So there are two more things coming down with Mike where we need to pay attention to. But I'm setting this high. I just want to make sure it's in our notes for the future. But I, I believe we need to have this moratorium.
Yeah, there's just a lot of technologies that are now in place. When the ordinance was put together, there's things that didn't used to exist and now, you know, are coming to rural areas. So I know zoning was already working on this. They were the ones that had brought this up. There was a gentleman that had come and spoke a couple of meetings ago at the zoning commission meeting. And I mean, it's something that it's less invasive because it's maybe ten or twenty acres here and then over here. So if one farmer wants it, another farmer wants it, it's smaller areas. So maybe a little better than, you know, these big industrial ones that most people don't want to see. But it's still good to regulate it. If there's a tornado and it gets thrown into your neighbor's yard, what happens, right? And how does it get taken down? And there's, there's this thing. So, yeah, I would, I think it's good to give zoning the go-ahead green light. Just, you know, I think they're close to done on the industrial solar. This is probably, they've already just done solar. It's pretty similar. So let them get into this in the wind as they see fit. And like you said, there might be more things coming, but as they hit our desk, we'll just do what we can to. It's a pause. It's not a, we don't want it ever. It's a pause. Let's let them look at it, and then we'll look at it and get an ordinance in place, so.
I agree, just by reiterate, think that there's some innovative ways that people are trying to maybe break up in chunks, bigger projects, but I still have pause or hesitation because behind those, breaking it up, it's usually to skirt around what's already being approached. You know, there's a roadblock there, so I think they're breaking stuff up. But anyhow.
Need us to leave, guys? I was just kidding.
Security has showed up. All right, we will, go ahead and, go ahead and vote. Okay, the motion passes. We have next on our agenda. Next on our agenda. Uh, sorry, discussion of possible action to change next week's meeting day due to the holiday, I think Monday's not gonna work. Actually Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, I think is what we wanna do for.
Is that acceptable?
Whatever you guys prefer.
Is everybody available Thursday? I guess he's, you're gone.
I will, I would call Thursday. Maybe I'll make sure my friend.
Thursday the twenty ninth?
I should be there.
Can we do nine o'clock? Does that work for everybody, nine?
Yeah.
I'll make, that's a good, yep, alright, I'll make a motion for nine o'clock on Thursday, what's the date? Thursday the twenty ninth of May.
I'll second it.
Good, it's been moved and seconded to move our meeting for next week. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Uh, right on time, discussion of possible action about uh, new sheriff deputy, I had the opportunity to meet. Uh, last week, what was the last week?
Yeah, uh, week four, two weeks ago, yeah.
Weeks are running together, so.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, this is a practice that we wanna try to make, a permanent practice, whenever, hopefully we just keep all of our guys for a while.
Yeah.
Uh, but uh. Have the opportunity to ask Casey to introduce and then uh, the starting date and, and all of that kinda stuff.
Um, I know I asked Karen for the open. Do you have a copy of that sheet?
I don't have, you didn't ask me for that, I thought you asked me for the old sheet today. You have your own copies, I can find it out.
Or I can run back, we can find one.
Hey, or you want to call Kyra, see if she can remember or not?
We're sending by.
We can go into other items if you wanna wait or.
We run over there and grab, yeah.
Prepare sheriff would be nice.
Thank you the rest of the team here, please.
You guys take care of it.
We like him, but he just needs business, either had the taser or he last night here.
Our sheriff's put it up for him.
Yeah.
They both limonizer.
Alright, okay, uh, but uh.
Why don't we do my stuff real quick?
Go down to David's, uh, discussion of possible action temporarily reassign. Um, David Turner's committees, David, you wanna speak?
Sure, I I sent an email to the, to the team, blind copy, I forget my ownership of credit, and Karen's got a copy of it, so. Uh, I'll be traveling for three weeks, um, I will not be able to attend the central. The EMA Advisory Board on the twenty ninth at eighteen hundred at the Garwin Community Shelter. And then I need to add to that list, uh, the econ development meeting at five twenty seven, five, on five twenty seven. At eighteen hundred, how it, that's six o'clock for normal people. But, as she mentioned here, are you guys asking your own to be unavailable that?
Well, at least us two, I don't know about the rest.
On the what day?
Twenty seven.
Alright, where's that at?
There in the office, the office down here, west, our west annex.
Okay, I can, I'll make it.
So, uh, but those are the three one- ones that I will not be able to attend. And of course, I gave you guys where I'll be on. Those days.
Yep, I'll be, I'll be attending your, the central Iowa detention.
And then the EMA folks, that's the new emergency services folks, they're still putting together a lot of their policies. Uh, so forth.
Yep. That one's at Garwin, I can try to make that one to you.
It's at the community shelter there.
Yep, I can try to make that.
I will attempt to attend all three of the board meetings via phone from.
Okay.
Europe.
Sounds good, um. I'd make a motion that would just assign temporarily reassign, I'll do central Iowa detention and the EMA Advisory Board. And then current for economic development. They're moving the second into discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Alright.
Those motion carries. Drop down to um, the VA FY twenty six budget. Uh, who put the on?
I'm, I was putting the number here.
Uh, reviewing our finished budget for veteran affairs. It come up a little short for us. And just to stay, but it'll probably. It would've been nice to them, given I had some, before the final reading of the budget. We could've discussed this, maybe come up with a solution, but we're here to ask for the public hearing on amendment for the.
For for next, for for next, this next question.
Yeah, next.
So I want it.
And how much and what? How much and why?
Much and why?
Well, it's got to do with part-time position, um, there's nothing in there for that. And we can't find anything in there for. Commissioners compensation. But we should be short on that.
payroll, salaries.
Our salaries.
So, was it all like one line item or something, was it in yours?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we were told that the ten thousand dollar grant that came from the federal government was going to cover the two. Positions while they were overlapped. That's what we were told during budget type.
Yes, but there was nothing in there for the commissioners, make sure they're supposed to be paid also, we got that's nothing. Plus salary, good part. The full, can't cover the full amount.
For this year or for next year?
Next year.
Why would we need two salaries for next year, because I thought you were retiring.
Chad just started, Chad we were doing well. But the chances of him getting a security card to make him an actual certified director. We might get that by August, September. And if we don't have a little bit in there part-time for that period, the office will close. We've been through that. Also, Chad is not gonna step into that job cold. And know what to do without some on job training.
No confusion, it's just way different than what you said before.
No, it's not any different.
It is, yes it is, you said you were retiring in July. July first, you were going to be done, that's why we're short money, because you're going to work on past that.
Part-time, yes.
But our time person, not a, a, that's your county employee.
I thought we were going to use Marshall Town as an option in the event that the new gentleman wasn't ready by July the first. Yep. So.
You have twenty eight, twenty eight agreement with Marshall County?
No.
Just to use the county's sheriff's officer to help Chad.
If you, if you were not to be here, heaven forbid you were in an accident and couldn't serve the, the vets, where would they go?
They would go to other counties, but you're, you're depending on other counties to do Tama County's job.
That's not unusual, there's other counties that have dual, the people that cover both counties.
Experience, that's correct, but not just to assume that some other county's gonna be able to come in and help with this guy. It doesn't work that way, I take care of lots of different counties, and that's overabundance of what we should be doing. That other county doesn't pay me to do their job, the county doesn't compensate Tama County. For the amount of money that comes in because I just bought that claim for that other county. That's not fair to the other county.
So, you're doing work for other counties right now without a twenty eight agreement?
Yes, because those other counties can't keep on also, that's normal, just like Mr. Golden just said, that's normal. So you expect another county to come in and help with this new guy, how to get this other county can't train this, the new guy? I'm still training him twenty-four hours a day, I can't take a day off, that was my call. He's still doing training, the certification isn't even in here yet, he has to pass his test, but he's a certifier, like do the job. You have to go through like you know, Mr. Turn, you have to go through a background checking with legislation. That's what happened overnight, you guys won't do that, you all do that. So how long we talk to you about that, it takes training and time to get this federal government ID card, federal government information.
Have you applied for it?
Yes, he applied for it, yes sir.
When did he apply for it?
He applied for it uh, two weeks ago when he passed his accreditation pass.
And that's the August date that you gave?
Yeah, hopefully by August.
Didn't it say that there's something in the COVID game, still do it up and before they get the.
The PIP card, the PIP card, that's correct.
How do they get, I mean, is that something that's possible?
Card is the training that he's doing right now. Online.
You can't get into the, the special wear computing without that card.
The commissioners have made the motion and passed that I went down with down part-time, I don't need the insurance. So that's gonna cut back from that amount of money, we accounted for that, I accounted that when I did the budget in January. And I wouldn't use accounting insurance. So you're discussing this when you made the final budget. Basically, final budget without discussing anything in the department whatsoever.
Well, you didn't make your need aware.
Pardon me?
You did not make us aware of your need, we don't go back every.
When we're turning our budget.
Correct, and we approved whatever your request was. But the re- but the need changed. Your request has changed, you had asked us to bring somebody on early. To, so there could be some overlap before she retires, we did that, and we budgeted for that. Now you're adding some more hours on the other end of it, so that's not in our lap, that's in yours.
No, sir, we, well, in January, we budgeted for me, even, even Dick, even Chad, I budgeted for both of us.
It said right on the budget.
In twenty, twenty-five and twenty-six.
So then why are you sure, I understand, I mean, you've already answered that question, but I don't think that we're gonna come to an agreement on that, what's your request? That we set a budget hearing?
Yes, that, that's what he said. That's what he said, yeah, budget hearing.
Is that how you fix this Karen?
Um, after the first of the new fiscal year, you wanna start so that you need to, with hearings to, to, do the MMS, correct?
Okay, is there any other solution to the problem, uh, that we could explore?
I don't know what they do.
Just sit down, just sit down, hold to the budget.
State law, you have to have a certified. Person in that off, that's state law. You also have to pay commissioners. That's state law. You have done neither one of those things.
The salaries were just cut, the salary budget item that you, that you presented, that you approved. Just make Chad's salary, period, no one else's salary, it's a, it's a salary line item, it's like, it's good. That's it. It's a salary, salary line item.
Do we need a day or do we just need a motion for that one?
Wait until after the first of the year starts, the new fiscal year, and then you can do it.
But we need.
It will not go in the hole right away, then you're gonna be needing the auditors, you can wait until after the first of the new fiscal year.
July one.
Yep.
Yep.
And then you can set it.
Then we can set it.
Yeah.
Okay, need to revisit it after July first.
Yep, and if we took commissioners out, I mean, if that's how it works with the twenty, I mean, we'll, we will add that back in, I mean, we did not intentionally. Take the commissioners payout, so that's something definitely will.
We did, we approved the budget that they presented, we didn't take anything out.
Exactly.
And then the.
They did.
If you said he's certified by August, you're gonna be done by July, I mean, that would be maybe one, two months, I mean, that would be our, as soon as he's certified. What's that?
With the chaos and words.
Right, yep.
Oh, it might be August, it might be October.
Yeah. Yep, but do we like, as soon as he gets it, uh, they, they multiple retire, is that correct, or we're not sure yet? For sure, yep, drop the part-time. Yeah, okay. Yep, and then once he gets his card, then you would plan to leave as long as he appears to be doing a good, good job.
Does the commissioner, if they want somebody on fall, or what, what they want now?
Because on the job training, now what that'll look to, power wise. At this point, depends on Chad.
Okay. Karen will mark that down or just revisit with us at the end of fiscal year here.
Okay.
This sheriff's is doing anything? This is Andrew Bachelor, he comes from us, from uh, Hellplain Police Department. He uh, he's gonna be a great asset to the Tama County Sheriff's Office and we're very excited to have him here. Yeah.
Also, he'll be a rural deputy then?
Yep.
Give us a name, spell.
Andrew.
Andrew.
B, B A T C H, E L L E R.
That's not how you spell Andrew.
Look in the Bible.
Start the.
Um, I have today listed the uh, fold of office.
Yep.
But I believe, I can't remember what I can.
May sixth, which is when he came in and began his uh, paperwork and then getting sent out.
We're gonna do the opener? Yeah, okay, I don't know who wants to do it.
Sharon.
Oh, the sheriff.
You wanna point him first and then give.
I'll make a motion and we point Andrew.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing now all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
You want me to move, you want me in the background?
Careful when you back up. Alright, here we go. Raise your rank. Yeah, for me. I, Andrew Bachelor.
I, Andrew Bachelor.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution in the United States.
And the Constitution of the state.
I will.
And the Constitution of the state.
And faithfully and partially.
I will faithfully and partially. To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the office of Deputy County Sheriff in Tama County.
Of the off- see, office of Deputy Sheriff in Tama County.
As now or here and after required by law.
As now, here and after required by law.
Very, very happy to have him aboard.
Welcome.
The only, the only issue was that uh, maybe as tall, if not slightly taller than me. But I did take that into consideration.
What he's saying, I'll call this, you know.
Is he doing Sunday morning?
I've already given much district review.
And get the bet that she gets in the jail.
I get the bet that she gets in the jail.
Yeah, yeah, I can't say how excited we are to have Andrew, yeah, so.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
But I go to check you on playing command line.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Can you, uh, edit a tie in there on our sheriff? Thanks, Mike.
I will absolutely make known, I absolutely know what vehicle he drives. It's got plenty of different paint colors.
Easy. Correct, there are some different colors on there.
Something else is falling.
Was that the backing issue? Was that the backing issue?
No, yeah, it was a backing issue, but it was a separate backing issue.
Uh, discussion of possible action on IT director position, uh, we had a, do you want to speak to it?
So, I, I, as I told him, bless Michael Jackley, by the way, uh, it was a pleasure interviewing him. Uh, and as I told the board that interviewed him, um, out of 600-some people I'd interviewed for jobs, uh, top one or two of the people. I mean, he, he came in, we asked the first question, and he basically answered every question we were going to ask him uh, in his first answer, so, uh, and, and the, and, well, James is here from Marshalltown. He said that if we weren't hiring him, and he hadn't already hired a second, Michael would be working in, he goes by Mike, by the way, I'll be calling Mike, be working at all the time. He, I've, I've observed him, we've talked several times, and he's even called me and said, hey, I found a problem. Uh, we need to discuss it, so, uh, he's on the ball already. Started, what was it, 15 minutes after the interview, we hired him? That's how good he is. We want to make sure we got him before he got out of town. Um, and, uh, he comes with a wealth of knowledge. He's done an awful lot of, uh, things from a technical level, actually working as a director of Swaki.
Yes, sir.
And a, and a trust by then, and then he worked in the city of Ames, and so he's, he's dealt with an awful lot of different, um, areas while under the control or the direction of a, of a board, whether it be a supervising board in, in the Swaki settlement or, uh, through Ames. So, um, I'm very happy that, that he said yes, uh, and then he's seen everything. He can't say no. Mike, thank you so much for accepting, and I'm glad that you're here, and I, I know you're going to be telling the board an awful lot of, um, good things. Thank you very much. I'm excited to be here.
Good, Mike.
Very good.
Is, does that need, we need... Does that need emotion, and is that emotion?
We already hired him. I'll make that emotion that, that we've confirmed the hiring that we've already done.
Yeah.
I'll start again.
Let's move a second to appoint Michael Jackley for our IT director position, uh, date?
5/14.
5/14, um, and we're ready to pay with $85,000 in here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Make that part of the motion, and we'll book. Okay? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those in motion carries, we welcome you, and we're excited about it. I thought we were way behind the times when I started in Mahaska County. That was the first hire that I made in Mahaska County is bringing. We had, literally, the computer monitors were the size of VW Bugs on top of our, uh, on top of our desks, and so we had to get rid of those and get a new IT guy in. So much, everybody was so excited, and it, it will save us a lot of money in the long-term, if we have our guy.
Yep, and I'll echo, before we go on, I'll echo, so David and I and Karen and the two ISAC guys, James and Joel, were in there, and, yeah, just agree, very pleased. We had good candidates, but director-level experience definitely was, uh, yeah, quick sell, good salesman, um, but he, he does some good work, good background, and super excited. We'll see how it all fits in with everything, you know? We have a couple outside, you know, he's going to work with them to figure out how to get up to speed, and, and, uh, this board will approve things, but he's a good negotiator, and, and, uh, yeah, it was good. Our IT ISAC is really... Yeah, welcome aboard, ever, really, yeah.
Yep, and a couple of things that the IT people, when we had our audit, uh, when they had come, and, uh, had mentioned, and we want somebody work, obviously, that's a big com, component to it, but also trying to find somebody who is, uh, personable, who can get along with other departments, and who isn't going to hide in an office all the time because they're so introverted, they're afraid of the public, and I think we got all of our boxes, Jay. I think everybody would be very happy with, and, and he's fairly local, and so if you have somebody that has to move in and, you know, kind of get everything squared away, and, and, uh, but they don't have anything anchoring them here, then they go finding the next thing, and so I think that speaks well to us as well, so I think just a really good fit.
Yep, because you live B, Beeman, right? Yep, so he was nice and close, and...
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, so it'll be good, and ISAC will continue to help get him a speed train with James and Max and Ray, so.
Very good. All right, uh, next, discussion of possible action on the POE phone options.
Well, that, that's mine, and I'm, I'm handing that off to Mike.
I'm, I'm glad that you're handing that off so we can maybe get something done.
Exactly. It's only been on, it's only been on this.
Yeah, you did a good job, and if we were, yeah, because we needed an IT person.
And so, and, and Mike has already made appointments to talk with the area, our young people and the Windstream people. Uh, he, he doesn't sit around and, you know, think that he's not going to do anything. He's already acted and made those, made those arrangements last week, so I'm, I'm very pleased, um, I, and I'm also concerned because he's already found problems that you'll all be fixing before I get back, so.
It's all right, let's, let's get going on it, it's all right.
Is there anything that we need to get to on that?
Um, no, Mike's got a lot of...
Uh, from a timeframe standpoint, I know that we've got a lot coming down the pipe, and since the system has been discussed previously, I think it's one of those things that we really need to get eyes on again, go through and find who's home. My understanding was that there was potentially some things missed during the first assessment. Um, we've addressed those. I want to go back and speak with Ari, and that's going to take place today, actually. So in those conversations, all just kind of outlining along with introductions, uh, to each other, uh, what our expectations are, and then ask a few more questions that will allow me to kind of gather and see, okay, if this is their standpoint on it. That can drive further questions as well. Um, with these, with the phone system, uh, one of the biggest pieces to put in place is going to be the network switches with POE. That's a huge building block for the entire county's, uh, infrastructure, let's say, so I think we need to step back, capitalize upon that look. Um, as well as be robust enough to address any networking need we might find currently, so. A very big thing to get put in place prior to actually pulling the trigger and moving forward, I think. Uh, today will give us a lot of insight into that, and then I'll come back and report, so, okay, here's my recommendation now.
Very good. All right, well, thank you. And welcome. Hiring freeze exemptions, very nothing, um, discussion approved claims.
We have claims in the amount of $240,718.55. If those writing it down, it's 240, comma, 718, period, five-five. I'll make it mostly approved claims.
I'll stack it.
Let's move a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, do you have a comment again? Open up for public comments.
Where will Michael's office be?
Where, where, we, we're not telling you.
We're not telling you.
Like, I'm an IT person.
We're...
Oh, okay.
We're letting him scope it out, figure out where he's...
Don't put any word close to case.
There's a lot of people that want the, his office to be there.
I think you go wherever.
Yeah.
So, uh, this, I might have called one of you about this. On May 16th, Friday, the news broke concerning the hacking of batteries for units that are coming in from China. This is in conjunction with the concerns about the jet that's coming in from Qatar. Um, so upon dismantling for investigation and security purposes, um, uh, they are finding security breaches in, uh, in some of the fair areas, and it will be on the bigger project areas. Um, it will be similar to the smart access from offices that could just shut down a grid. So I expect a lot more information to come out about this, this week, so I, so I heard this on Friday one time, not even realizing you were bringing up the solar stuff today, so that's very timely, so thank you for doing that, and it is going to be dumped in our lap. Um, yeah, we're not going to be able to depend on anybody to take care of us. We'll be doing it ourselves. So, yeah, I wanted to bring that to attention so that people can just have a year to renew what's come and happened with it all. Yeah.
This, good.
Yeah, there's been a lot going on in the news. Um, most of our solar and wind turbine parts were made in China, and now we've got this terror deal going on, and that's not resolved yet, but it's something like... But it may be left, you know, who knows how they're going to resolve this, but, uh, Nancy and I went to, oh, some grass up in Minnesota last week, and you get off the main interstate on the Blacktop Road, and there's, there's a lot, there's twice as many smaller, small solar panel fields as there was last year, and last year, there was twice as many as there was the year before, and these are all fields. I know I didn't see one over five or 10 acres, and most of them are right, like, a lot, some up to like five acres, you know, out in the field, but a lot of them are just in people's backyards, you know, farm houses in the backyard, and they may, you know, they have one or two acres at the most, but, um, I'm wondering if they just, do they go out of their own ways? How do we do here? Can they buy it from them if there's an action of supply?
From what, what we gather, uh, the people who can purchase those don't even have to live here. Uh, the people who can purchase, uh, those panels don't have to live in the county, they don't have to live in the state. There's really no regulations, and that was what the big concern was, was that there could be people owning these things from all over the place. There's no safeguards at all, and so that has to be worked out locally here until they do something at the state.
I think one, uh, this was a year ago, but one of the TED guides told me that ultimately it's, uh, was it, uh, a Japanese company owns every new, is that right?
Yeah.
But, uh, yeah, you know, yeah, I agree with that. That's not right, but there might be a big shortage of solar panels and wind turbines, you know, or repair parts and that.
Yep.
Okay. Um, in conjunction with that, there was a report just recently in the newspaper about a farmer that has got 230 acres that he cannot sell grain off of because of three turbine fires on his 230 acres, and, uh, so there's debris, and the grain companies are refusing to take it because of fiberglass, so it, this stuff is a big deal, and we uncovered so much in the last three and a half years. I have another topic too before we dismiss.
Okay.
Okay, so I always think, I recommend you not talk because then Karen put my name, but today, um, Krista Ball, well, you do, that Krista Ball of Economic Development, S T C, and Mental Health, um, that Catherine brought up. Um, having lived here my whole life, and with the community ties that I have, um, there, there are a lot of, you know, problems in this end of the county, and people have moved in here, and they have left because there's nothing to stay for. Um, this county needs the best counselor of all, that would be Jesus Christ, and they don't have it. We have a lot of churches, um, but not very many God churches, Jesus churches. So, um, we have a lot of rotting buildings because they're not being kept up. That looks horrible. Uh, we, then we tear down good buildings and put up brand-new buildings. Um, people who care about historical value, that sends a strong signal. We have had problems with alcohol and drug abuse for most of my life in public places, human trafficking, crime, um, we graduate kids maybe, or if they don't drop out, that cannot read, write, or do a rhythm, but you have a period. Stuff's going on in our schools that is not being, that the kids who have spiritual, everything's about cosmetics and self-attainment. I mean, you go to other channels, you see all the buildings that are being bumped up, repaired, kept going. Um, Catherine is fighting a losing battle in the end of the county where we've got all this stuff going on, there's all the inner stuff that people don't want to put up with. There's a better challenge to live in, so she needs to bring God back in here, accountability, moral values, ethics, and people need to stay home and take care of the children, raise their children, and stop running around with other people. Amen. And until that happens, she might as well, um, just work in our family, I guess.
All right, any with you?
Good, Patrick? Just a quick comment. Catherine's done a heck of a good job for Tama County, and we need to make sure we keep her here, you know? And I feel the frustration she's had, not knowing. You guys need to hear from the public that we need her, so I just want to say that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any else? I'll just make one comment on what has been said. I think if we don't have good, uh, if we can't keep just a main infrastructure item like mental health, that's an economic development issue, because if we don't have resources for people to come who are struggling with mental health, thousands of people in our county that are struggling with mental, if we don't have services for them, you can't live a productive life. There's no production coming out of that, and so a very basic infrastructure need is mental health services, substance abuse services. If we don't have that, there is no economic development.
So, there are things in public employment places, either during the work hours or after the work hours, that sets a very bad example, and that's going on in Tama Tule area, and it's been going on for a very long time. So we've got some real cleanup stuff to do here that would help Catherine a whole lot, because she can't do that stuff.
Sure.
She's actually only been here, I think she said six years. Well, this stuff is a whole lot older than six years.
Yeah.
And when you have parents doing all this stuff, how are the kids going to survive? They have to go home to that, if there's anybody home to go home to.
I will close by the comments. Have we hit on everything?
I think so.
We'll adjourn at 10:15.